For the whole meeting. I see you for like two minutes after.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to call this meeting for the Lake County Schools Regular School Board Meeting from February 11th to order. Would you please stand for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance?
Amen. Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any changes, amendments, additions, or deletions to the agenda? CNN. Okay, the approval of amendments, Superintendent?
Recommend approval of the minutes from the Regular School Board Meeting, January 14th, 2019, and the Regular School Board Meeting, January 28th, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? CNN, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Representation to District Spotlight, Literacy Week in Lake County Schools, Ms. Owens. Now we're ready to be knocked out of our seats for this.
Our district and all over the state of Florida, schools observed Literacy Week from January 28th through February 1st. The goal was to promote literacy and excellent reading habits, and the statewide theme was spreading literacy one view at a time. In Lake, our schools celebrated literacy in a variety of ways.
As part of our school improvement goals, one of our goal was to improve and increase literacy, K through five, and drawing attention to literacy, not only to for our students, but also for our parents to join that, to make that partnership. And this was one of those steps in increasing literacy.
Research shows that the more students are reading, their vocabulary is building, their comprehension is stronger, their reading ability alone increases. So why not encourage them to read books that they love?
But the most popular way we celebrated literacy in our schools is with guest readers who visited classrooms to read to students. We welcomed guests from city officials, law enforcement officers, local business leaders, parents, school board members, and other district leaders, including our superintendent. While many schools welcomed guests who came into the schools to read to students, Eustace Heights Elementary administrators and teachers took a bus ride through the city and greeted students and families with new and gently-used books. U-Matilla Elementary found another innovative way to help students build their personal libraries at home, a vending machine that dispenses books instead of candy or cola. Students earn Bulldog Books for making good decisions with their behavior and schoolwork. Then, the Bulldog Books can be traded in for coins for the book vending machine. The idea generated national attention as it was highlighted on CNN, Good Morning America, and major news networks. We enjoyed seeing our students get excited about books and become motivated to do more reading. The challenge now is to keep the momentum going. In Lake, literacy isn't celebrated for just one week. It's a part of everything we do: reading, writing, thinking, and talking, in every class, every day. Lake County Schools is the destination district for providing students with individual opportunities to excel. Stay tuned for the next District Spotlight where we will continue shining a light on what makes Lake great.
All right. You did a great job, Ms. Owens. Thank you. All right, 402 is the Resolution 2019-01 recognizing February as Black History Month. Dr. Weiskopf.
Good evening, Board Superintendent. It is my privilege to bring to you a resolution in celebration of Black History Month. I'd like to go ahead and read the resolution and then submit for your signatures if you don't mind. So whereas the month of February is recognized as Black History Month since the Black historian Carter G. Woodson, known as the father of Black history, proposed in 1926 an observance honoring the accomplishments of Black Americans, and whereas in 1976, the observance became recognized and established as Black History Month, and whereas the School Board of Lake County, Florida believes in the merit of education, respects hard work, promotes perseverance and faith in self, and recognizes the importance of understanding the different origins, culture, and heritage of all Americans, and whereas in the past, African-Americans such as Mary McLeod Bethune, George Washington Carver, Frederick Douglass, Langston Hughes, Martin Luther King Jr., Rosa Parks, Shirley Chisholm, and Jackie Robinson have made incredible contributions recognized by all and have inspired the masses, and whereas much recognition is due to those many outstanding African-Americans who continue that inspiration and overcome many obstacles to excel in such fields as education, medicine, sports, human rights, space exploration, government, and religion, including President Barack Obama, Michael Jordan, Colin Powell, Maya Angelou, Oprah Winfrey, Condoleezza Rice, and the Reverend Murphy McKenzie, whereas the School Board of Lake County, Florida is proud to honor, recognize, and pay tribute to local African-Americans who have had a tremendous impact on this district and county, Margaret Ward, Virgil Hawkins, William McKinney, Tom Poole, and John Christian, and whereas the Lake County Schools are encouraged to plan lessons and special activities to recognize the important role African-Americans have played in the growth and prosperity of our nation, and to therefore learn from the struggles and accomplishments of others to strengthen the bond we share as a national family. Now therefore be it resolved in this resolution of the School Board of Lake County, Florida, that the month of February in the year 2019 be recognized for celebration of Black History Month in the district schools of Lake County. Thank you.
Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, thank you, Dr. Weiskopf. Now we're to public input. We have two cards, and we'll let the ladies go first. Actually, I should say lady. Ms. Kathy Smith from the LCEA.
Oh, boy, I get to go first, huh?
Yeah.
Kathy Smith from LCEA. Good evening, Superintendent and Board Members. I've been trying to keep up with the changes in the county's personnel on the board docs, but it's a struggle since we have so many resignations every year. It was actually stated that this year Lake County should not have to hire as many teachers as what they've had in the past. But the resignations last year totaled 305, with appointments totaling 427. With our current numbers at 221 resignations and 422 newly hired teachers, we will surpass last year's numbers. Lake County needs to retain our teachers. Our administrators should be helping our teachers instead of telling them to resign or be terminated. With our state having over 2,000 vacancies still, where are these administrators going to find a new teacher to replace the one that isn't a good fit or are going in a different direction? Shouldn't we be trying to save our teachers? Help them if they're stressed, are struggling with how to teach their curriculum, especially those with noneducational degrees? Or maybe we just need to try a different subject or a different grade level? I looked today, and there are 23 instructional positions that are listed on Lake County's website. Please think about these numbers and how LCEA and FEA, which have also offered their help, can work together with Lake County to keep our teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Stuart Clatt with LCEA.
I'm going to go to this side for a change. All right. I want to talk about Rosenwald Schools. Lake County had, Eustis had one of the first Rosenwald Schools in Lake County. Now, for those of you who are not familiar, Julius Rosenwald was a Jewish immigrant, vice president of Sears &amp; Roebuck Company. He chose to give back to the community monies to open up schools for African-American students throughout the South. Lake County ended up with eight of these schools. Here's a picture of the one, the first one, in Eustis in 1930, and we also had in all of the main cities in Lake County. And so, and then there's a picture of one of the first Black teacher assemblies in Florida. Actually, the actual picture is about twice that big, but I only have one. So, just a good into history, I recommend that you do some research, find out about Julius Rosenwald and the Rosenwald Schools in Lake County. Actually, there is one still standing, and that is in Bill's hometown, Okeahumta. Yes, and it's the last one still standing, and they were, depending on the need of the community, could be anywhere from two rooms to six-room schools throughout the 20s, 30s, and early 40s. And so, just a nice piece of Lake County Black history. And I want to thank Kathy for bringing up the great disappearing teacher mystery. We know that, and Stephanie knows this too, we're seeing less students going into education and graduating. We see actually by about half of what they were even four or five years ago. So teachers are very valuable. We need to do everything we can to work with and keep teachers. Bill knows turnover is expensive, and as an expensive turnover, that's an expense that Lake County Schools can use in other needed places. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right, that's all the public input cards that we have at this time. Moving on to reports, 6.01, the Educational Foundation Report, Ms. Carmen Cullen-Batt, the Executive Director. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman, School Board Superintendent. I had the opportunity to read at Eustace Middle School. I'd read in elementary schools for years and years and years, but I thought, reading to eighth graders, they're going to have a good nap. But I read The Hunger Games, and those kids were wide-eyed, and I think it took all of maybe 20 minutes before it was checked out. So, but reading to kids at any age is a great thing. Apple Mart had 455 teacher visits year-to-date, and we've distributed $34,125 worth of supplies. For the past 10 years, Lake County EMS has provided us a storefront with utilities for our Mount Door Apple Mart location, and at the beginning of the year, they relocated into another facility. So we were able to find a new home and a portable at Eustace Middle School for our Triangle Apple Mart. We've been awarded two AT&amp;T Grants, and Dan Pollak from AT&amp;T will be presenting the checks to Lake Tech and to Groveland Elementary at the Foundation Board Meeting on February 27th. Each one of those grants is worth $2,000. Teacher of the Year is this Saturday, and Duke Energy, Dr. Man Hussein and his wife Michelle are the presenting sponsors. Ernie Moore Enterprises and Head Contact Solutions are providing each one of the 47 nominees with a new chair, and Jenkins Auto Group is giving the winner a three-year lease on a Volkswagen Tigan. We have 537 attendees, and the sheriff will be emceeing the evening. You should have received an email today with the details of the school-related of the year and Rookie Teacher of the Year finalist tapping, which will be occurring in the near future, so please mark your calendars for that. The Scott Strong First Clay Shoot will be at Blackjack Sporting Clays in Sumterville on February 22nd. We already have 31 of the 34 teams and are positioned to make or to gross right around $40,000. Take Stock in Children applications deadline is this Friday, and we will be selecting 45, or 46 new Take Stock in Children scholars to induct from the class of 2023. Speaking of Take Stock in Children, we are honored today to recognize the achievement of some amazing Take Stock in Children scholars. When a student is inducted into Take Stock program in the eighth grade, they are given the opportunity to earn a two-year tuition scholarship upon high school graduation. In 2012, we introduced an incentive program to award our top scholars for the class of 2020 for not only meeting our program requirements, but for exceeding them. Grade point average attendance behavior and community service hours serve as a criteria to select our top winners. And our winners will receive an upgraded scholarship, which will add two years at a state university to the two years at a Florida college, which they had previously been awarded. It is now with great pressure that I introduce these students to you. I'm going to ask that staff come up, and then that as they are announced, that their parents, the mentors, and the students join me at the podium. Our first student is Atiana Cardenas, and Atiana is a junior at Lake Mineola High School. She is currently dual-inrolled at Lake Sumter College through the Health Science Collegiate Academy and plans to graduate with her AA degree. She has logged over 200 community service hours. She is also a current member of the Alpha Beta Kappa, and she aspires to become a pediatric doctor and to open her own practice after medical school. Our next, our next recipient is Bretland Coolidge. Bretland is a junior at South Lake High School, has been involved in and held leadership positions in Claremont Police Explorers, ROTC, National Honor Society, and more. He has over 400 hours of community service. He has taken 10 AP classes, and he hopes to attend Princeton or Yale after graduation. And he is also currently first in overall GPA ranking for his graduating class. Yolanda Iglesias is a junior at East Ridge High School. She is currently taking AP and honor courses. She has logged over 280 community service hours. She's a member of Avid and DECA, and she has also been on the lacrosse team for three years. She aspires to someday become a CEO and wants to thank her mentor and her mother for their continuous support. Crystal is a junior at Eustace High School. She's been actively involved in ROTC as well as Color Guard since ninth grade. She has been a part of Upward Bound for three years. She has over 150 community service hours, and she aspires to go to the University of Florida to pursue her bachelor's and master's in nursing. I present some pretty incredible kids.
Yes, if you will ask, if you will come around through the dials and let us shake your hands.
Congratulations, CEO. Congratulations. Very well accomplished. Congratulations. Very well done. Congrats. Hey, congratulations. Also, parents, great job.
Just one statement. Make sure Doug checks the route.
Route? Okay.
You know what I'm talking about.
I will.
To the south end.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you. I know what you're talking about. I did it today, and it won't work this time.
Speaking in code.
Thank you.
All right, Attorney Report. Mr. Johnson.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I received an email last week, I believe, from the county attorney indicating that the county was interested in coming back and renewing the impact fee infill program that has been going on. She was going to prepare an appropriate ordinance, I assume, and get it back to me. I told her that I would check and let the board know what was coming up, and obviously, if you have a need to get some information about how it's been working or what's going on, then you might want to do that soon rather than later because they'll be asking to go forward with it.
I'd like to see a summary of the past year.
Yeah, are they going to present to us, like Leslie or anybody?
They didn't say.
I'm sure they'd be happy to.
Okay.
It has been a tremendous success. You can drive through some of the subdivisions and see new construction where there wouldn't be. So it's worked well.
Well, do you want to have Ms. Campion come before us, or?
I would like to ask, do we know when we're going to have our impact fee study done?
I don't know.
It seems to me that would be, that would be the appropriate time to really discuss any kind of waiver.
Good point.
To make.
How long will it take, Scott? You don't know? Okay. Okay. Oh, he said soon.
I will pass on to Ms. Marsh that we'd be happy to talk to them about it, but it might be timing. It might be a good idea to wait until we get the impact fee study in hand.
Yeah.
Okay.
When is, when are we supposed to renew? We do it every year, right? So it must be coming up, obviously.
Well, it was, that was one of the options. She said that, I don't remember what the county wanted to do, but there was the option of just renewing it for the next year. We had done it, as I recall, the first time through, like, we're in about a nine-month period, then we renewed it a year. And so we're in the next renewal of that, and the question was, to think about was, you want to renew it another year, or you want to do it in a longer period of time? So you went on to come back and renew it every year, or what alternative do you want to consider?
If we have time, I think we need to have the impact fee study first. That's where I land.
Okay. That's, that's how we'll work it then.
I'll pass that on and let the Superintendent know what the results of that conversation are.
All right.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Moving on then to new business, and no one pulled anything, so Superintendent?
I recommend approval of Consent Agenda Items 8.01 to 10.09.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? CNN, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Under discussion, 11.01, report from Eustace High School SAC with the results from the public hearing held for renaming the baseball field.
That was actually submitted to me by Principal of Eustace High School, and per Board Policy 8.54, following its required public hearing, the School Advisory Council at Eustace High School has presented to the Board a proposal to name the Eustace High Baseball Field the David Lee Diamond at Stewart Cotrell Field, and I am recommending approval of this request.
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Just like to say also, my understanding is they reached out to the Cotrell family on behalf of their son, and they are more than happy for this to be done, so.
Yeah.
I think it's great.
I thought that was really sensitive of them and thoughtful.
Yes. All right, motion and a second. Any further discussion? CNN, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Moving on to the Superintendent's report.
I have a couple of things tonight. First, I want to mention that Cypress Ridge Elementary School will be holding a public hearing on February 26th at 7:00 PM at the school to receive public input for the naming of the new cafeteria after longtime educator and former principal Dennis Reed. So that will be coming to you following their public hearing.
All right. That's it.
We do have some letters of support. I have a few other things that I do want to mention before I get to my letters of condolences. This week, on Thursday, we will join Broward County Schools and districts across the state and our country in a moment of silence as we remember the students, staff, and families of Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School. It was a year ago this week, on February 14th, that the tragic shooting took place there and changed so many lives forever, and we'll remember them, and we'll certainly continue to pray for the families and friends of those lost. Also in February, we are observing CTE Month, celebrating the many career and technical education programs that are engaging our students and preparing them for college and of the workforce. So watch our social media pages for highlights on those programs throughout the month. And I want to remind parents that we are officially into our educational choice open enrollment season, and this is when parents can enroll their children in schools outside of their attendance boundary, as long as the school has capacity and the family can provide transportation. We started taking applications on February 1st, and will continue doing so through April 30th, and there is more information on our website. And we are accepting nominations currently for the next inductees into our Alumni Hall of Fame. So if you know someone living or deceased who has graduated from one of our schools and has made outstanding professional, athletic, or humanitarian contributions to this community, the nation, or the world, please nominate them. And you can do it online on our website, and you have until Thursday, February 28th. And the new inductees will be announced at the Education Foundation's Night of Stars in April. And lastly, this weekend, the Rhythm of the Nights, which is the choral group from East Ridge High School, competed in the international competition for high schools acapella, and they placed second overall, and will be going to the next round in Athens, Georgia in March. So congratulations to them. We're very proud of that group, and there's a YouTube video of their performance, and it is truly amazing. So I'll send you that link. And then lastly, we do have some letters of condolences, one to Dorothy Williams and the loss of her husband Donald Williams and the brother, and he was the brother of Christine Range, who are both custodians at Taveri's Middle School. And then, very sadly, this weekend Laura Schneiderman, who was a program specialist for IDEA in our ESE department, passed away suddenly, and she will be greatly missed.
Yes. All right. Board comments, Mr. Mathas?
So it's been an interesting week in education as the governor announced the, ended Common Core and announced his funding initiative. I think that, that what is of concern to me is that there's no discussion of making the equity formula permanent at this point. And even though they're talking about $9,000 bonuses one time, the silos of money were just shifted, so there's been no real increase in educational appropriation. Right now, based on the budget, not the governor's budget, but I think the ones in the House, that we'll see a net increase of $50 a student. So it's better than, what, we get $0.23 a year ago?
$0.47.
$0.37, so we're moving right along. The, fortunately, though, the equity component, this year the Senate controls the budget, and that it is on their mind. So anyone, Kristy Burns with any influence, Kristy Burns, if you could give us some help, Kristy Burns.
It will work.
And, and so that is a quest that we need to continue because that ultimately will give us the sustainability to properly take care of our kids financially and offer the programs. So I, I'll be very interested, Superintendent, watching how the governor and the new, whatever this new curriculum is going to look like and new standards as we go through reform. It doesn't seem like we can ever settle down, and the target continues to move, as far as I'm concerned. That's it.
Salute.
So, yeah, the standards change in just her audience perspective in 2007, and 2010, and 2012, and now here we are, 2019, happening again. So gaps in students' instruction are what we're most concerned about at this point in time, not knowing what's coming down the road. So I know it was a big topic of conversation in my math class at UCF on Tuesday of last week, and we just reiterated we do what's best for kids, and so we'll continue to do best practices, but it certainly has everybody on the edge of their seat. We are going to Lake Legislative Days next week, and I'm going with a team from the City of Leesburg. I've got Sandy Moore from there.
Chambers.
Chambers. I know, I'm like, what is it? Not the partnership, that's what was in my mind. And we also have the Early Learning Coalition going with us. We're going to do a PK 12 front and have several meetings in two days, a good discussion, hopefully. And they are on board with the funding, being one of the biggest pieces to focus on. I already got with, with Sherry, and she's going to put together a handout that we can give them. So, you know, send well wishes that way. I also wanted to tell you guys that I was made aware today that the State Science Fair, I know this is a long shot, but the State Science Fair is about 100 judges short right now. So if you're interested in being a state-level science fair judge, you should go to the Science Fair website, the State Science Fair website. You can Google Florida State Science Fair, and it'll pop up because it's, it's a pretty common website, but if it's something that you're interested in, Kristy Burns. They are needed judges. Celebrate Literacy Week. I wasn't here last week, so I didn't get to say that it was super fun. Treadway Elementary School sure knows how to put on a show. The assistant principal toured the cafeteria with me and some other guest readers in the blueberry costume, that she was violet, and it was phenomenal. So the night before was the big production, but she put the costume back on the next day and walked around campus, and the kids were so excited. Look, it's violet! Look, it's violet! And she was smiling, and the kids were, it was great. I did have the opportunity, though, you know, we were talking about teacher I did have the opportunity, though, you know, we were talking about teacher retention and how important that is to keep our teachers. And while I was at Treadway, I probably have seven former students that are at Treadway. And so, I made it a point to just stop in and see them, and I am not kidding you. So, I took Jensen with me, because middle school doesn't start until 9:20, and this was at 8:20 in the morning, and so I took her with me. And she was so surprised to see my students, because I'd knock on the door, and they'd look, and they'd go, "Oh, my gosh, it's Ms. Luke!" And they'd all introduce me, and they were just thriving in that, and where they were. But it was just so nice to visit them and to see that, and to see that they've got their support system there and the network there. And I don't know, it was, it was really a really nice day to go and see them and to see them doing very, very well in what they're doing. And I also just wanted to say something about the Science Fair. So, the State Science Fair was, or the District Science Fair was amazing, and I know that we have a lot of people that go to great lengths to make that happen for our students. We had some amazing projects in the room, both in middle school and elementary school, and we have workers that worked from sunup to sundown for multiple days to bring that to our students, and we are certainly thankful for them and the work that they put in extra over and above. And then the last thing I wrote down was solo ensembles this week for Lake County students. And so, we have a lot of middle schoolers and high schooler band students that are going to go and do their solos and their duets and their ensembles, and we just wish them the best of luck. Thank you.
Mr. Dodd.
Yeah, and I'd also like to give a shout-out to the entire curriculum team that worked so hard to put on that Science Fair. Once again, I think we all got an opportunity to go out and judge, and it's fantastic of our board to be so committed to our students and to the scientific process, if you will. I'll tell you, these middle schoolers certainly blew me away. As you interview them, you get the feeling that they're the ones who did the project. It was not the parents, because as they, as they talk and explain the projects, sometimes I lost a little bit track of what they were trying to explain. I'm afraid it's been a number of years since I took chemistry, but nonetheless, very, very well done, and I can't wait to see these projects go on to represent Lake County at the state level. Those are fantastic works. I think one of the big topics of conversation among teachers in the last week or so has been about the best and brightest. That has been, you know, a whirlwind of proposals we've seen come forward, and, and, you know, on one hand, you almost started to get excited, because you saw that this pot of money was significantly larger than it has been in the past, and so you almost think that more teachers are going to get the opportunity to benefit from this. But then you look at the other side of this, and you see how volatile the program really is, right? Because there seem to be some strings attached, and that there are bonuses versus actually going to salary increases. And, and so, that, you know, creates this angst or this anxiety of, okay, well, I might get it this year, but do I get it next year? The school has to continue to improve. What if I'm already in a school, and we just hold our own? Do I now all of a sudden lose this bonus, even though I'm, you know, contributing significantly? Or let's say I'm a fifth-grade teacher, and, and my scores are great, but the third grade kind of tanked this year, and now all of a sudden, because the school overall didn't perform as well, now I lose that bonus? There's just too much volatility to that. You know, I'd really love to see, oh, and, and coupled with the, the issue that we have so many instructional staff that would not benefit from that. We have all these coaches and program assistants and literacy coaches, media specialists, right? They don't qualify as a classroom teacher either, from my understanding. It just leaves too many people from the instructional staff outside this program. I guess I'd really love to see us encourage the, the local control of that, whether that comes in the form of the BSA, Base Student Allocation, or whether or not, I mean, even if they were to categoricalize that as specifically for teacher salaries and allow us to make sure that all of our folks are taken care of. I think that's the way to go. Interested to see how that dialogue transpires, as we know that this is just so far one guy's proposal, and the legislature still has to weigh in. But hopefully, we'll be out there fighting for our teachers, as they deserve it.
I certainly second all that. I have just a couple comments. I noticed, I, I don't know if most people have noticed, but at this time of year, we don't pull a lot of items, and that is mostly because of this time of year. There's just not that much on the agenda that isn't rote, and that I just, you know, I don't need to pull a field trip for kids at Claremont Middle School, for example. So, that's why our meetings are a little bit shorter. I also had the honor of speaking as a keynote speaker for the Eustis Middle School Junior Honor Society. That was really a pleasure. It's wonderful to see so many bright and upcoming young children who are just engaged and volunteering, and that's what I spoke about, was volunteering, and that it's okay to fail. And it was really neat, and the kids were just so adorable and so cute, and although I know they were middle schoolers, so we can't say cute. But it was really a pleasure. So, and that's about all I have, and I will work on the Science Fair, as well as making sure we have enough funding for all people in the state of Florida.
The legislative conversation reminded me that I did have one item that I wanted to mention to you, and if you would, write down, House Bill 2489. This is one you will want to support. As you well know, we have had great success this year with our new Construction Academy out at Leesburg High School, and there was some interest in the Eustis community about expanding that. And we actually have a nice space to accommodate a program at Eustis High School. And so, this House bill is an education appropriation request, and it is called Elevate Lake, and it is to expand that Construction Academy into Eustis High School. And there's a lot of support for this within this community, and so I would ask you to just to keep that one in mind as you're talking with legislators. It was filed by Representative Hague about two weeks ago and should be filed soon, if not already, on the Senate side by Senator Backsley. He's going to sponsor it on that side. So, and our lobbyists are already on it, working on it, and we've submitted all of the request forms, so we are hoping that we will get some additional dollars to expand that program. They do not have, within that area, they don't have a hands-on STEM program, and so this would bring some opportunities for those students as well and increase our partnership with Lake Tech, who's nearby as well. So, we're looking forward to hopefully elevating Lake.
Excellent.
Just a couple things. I also was able to participate in the reading with Treadway, and I was double-booked. I didn't realize I'd already committed to Eustis Heights, so I read at Treadway, and then I beat traffic to get to Eustis Heights and was able to read there as well. March 1st, I'll be at Taverri's Elementary for the Dr. Seuss. And I would just like to thank Ms. Luke for filling in and speaking, just being ready to speak at all times. I failed to make that meeting, but I was having to be with a family that had lost a loved one, so that's why I wasn't able to be there that night. But I appreciate you stepping in and doing that for me. Mr. Dodd was afraid that he was going to have to step in Friday night. He texts me and said, "Are you, are you coming?" And I said, "Yes, I'm here." So, he said, "Okay." But, but it was great. And I, and once again, you're right, Mr. Dodd, everyone that was involved with that Science Fair needs to be recommended and applauded for everything that they did, because it was great. And I was amazed with the robotics side and the young boy that won that competition there and then ended up winning a trophy as well with what he made. I, it just made me want to make sure I went and got some steel and put around my credit cards or whatever, because he had made something that would read your credit.
Oh, wow.
As a middle school student. He could scan your credit card. Yeah, so it was fascinating. All right. I'm sorry?
You should probably put him on our payroll.
He's pretty young. Also, Leesburg High School in the girls' weightlifting classification, they came in second in the state as a team. They only lost by one point. If they'd had one girl that could have got somewhere else, they would have probably won the whole thing, as far as that goes. And then they also had a couple of girls that lifted for state championship, and that was pretty good. You know, Taverri's had a girl that finished third in her classification, and so Lake County was represented by 16 athletes at state competition. That was phenomenal for girls. So, I think that was great. That's all I have to say. We're adjourned. Good night.